It is six thirty. Am I broadcasting?
Yep.
Okay, great.
Everything's on.
Thank you so much. Good evening. This is Mary-Kate Corsey, Chair of the Auburn Public Library Board of Trustees, and I'm calling our meeting to order at six thirty-one on Wednesday, November first, two thousand twenty-three. This is an open meeting of the Auburn Public Library Board of Trustees. It's being recorded by Auburn Public, in the Auburn Public Library Merriam Room. Please note that this meeting is being recorded by Auburn Cable Television. Is anyone else recording at the meeting? The agenda for this meeting was posted on the Auburn Town website on Monday, October thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three. Permit me to confirm that members of this body and persons anticipated on our agenda are present. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Matt Toth?
Present.
Erica Briesacher?
Present.
Vera Karain?
Present.
Steve Reddick?
Present.
Just want to welcome Lindsay Baker?
Present.
Excellent, and I am present. Town employees participating, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Molly Halsar?
Present.
Excellent, thank you so much. So we will begin with the first item on the agenda, which is to review the minutes from October fourth. Oh, before I do that, I just wanted to reach out and thank Anne El Said, who also applied to be a member of our board, interviewed beautifully, and she's a lovely person, so we just want to thank her for that. And again, welcoming Lindsay Baker to our team.
Thank you.
So if everyone would be kind enough to review the minutes. I think that's the minutes. Is that everyone else's, you mean?
None of them are.
How about mine? Now, do you have a mic there? Because as long as I could be heard, then it's fine.
I, my earphones, I could do.
Okay, great. Thank you.
This was a great job, Steve.
Yeah, I was just going to say that.
This was not easy, this meeting. And I don't know how you did this. I had to go back over one of these, just to be positive. And I'm telling you, it seems to be, everything is here.
Thank you, but I would say that thanks go to Town of Auburn Audiovisual. Because I was able to sit with the video, make sure I got everything right.
Smart, smart. So do I have a motion to accept the minutes?
Absolutely.
Very good. And do you have a second?
Second.
Second, Erica. And I'm just going to go through a quick roll call to approve the minutes. Vera Karain?
Yes.
Steve Reddick?
Yes.
Lindsay Baker?
Yes.
And I approve the minutes, hundred percent. Thank you so much. So, oops, excuse me, Molly. So we're going to move to the next item on the agenda, which is the Director's Report and the APL Expenditures. Molly, if you don't mind?
Sure. So I'm Molly Halsar. I'm a member of the library's administrative team, delivering the Director's Report on behalf of our Director, Jean Collins, who is currently on vacation. And a couple of updates that are not on the Director's Report. The Director submitted two items to the capital budget for two thousand twenty-nine, forty thousand for the children's room carpet replacement, and eighty thousand for the public area carpet replacement. And regarding the Friends, once the revisions to the collection development policy, as requested from the Friends, is complete, she asked me to please send it directly to her and indicate that it's the final copy, and then it will be posted on the website. So on to the actual Director's Report. For facilities, the GPW was able to fix the leak in the ceiling of this room, and tiles were replaced as well. It seems to be working. No need to call a roofer at this time. About half of the materials have arrived for the new play area in the children's room, the housekeeping corner, that should be set up by early November. The state aid report was completed and was attached to this packet as well. She also submitted six grants to the Auburn Cultural Council. And she also met with Auburn Youth and Family Services and an ESL specialist working towards a library collaboration. For technology, CW Mars will be migrating to a new cataloging system, launch date early November two thousand twenty-three. Staff will be trained. We'll see how it goes. And Paper Mountain Web Platform, that's our library website. She's working with that company to migrate the website to a new server, and then eventually to update the website pages. Eighty percent completion planned by December. Our Halloween celebration we had on Saturday, October fourteenth, ten to one. We had two hundred thirty-seven visitors during that three hours, which a lot of them stayed for at least an hour, maybe an hour and a half. There were activities in the children's room, scavenger hunt, and the Merriam Room crafts, pumpkin decorating, things like that. A total of eight hundred sixty-nine crafts and activities during that time. The Friends book sale was on Saturday, October twenty-first. They did end up moving it indoors because of the weather that day. The, let's see, the Assistant Director position is posted. Interviews are scheduled with the Library Director and the Assistant Town Manager, HR Director. Got the state aid report and the bill schedules are attached here. And I can answer questions about those if you have them. Also attached are the results from the three surveys that were done after our summer reading program. So there's one for the toddler program, which there were three hundred thirty-seven children over the six-week timeframe of that program. We received fifteen survey responses. There was the summer camp, which was the two sessions per week for two weeks for ages eight to twelve. There were fifty-one spots total for survey responses received. And then one for the general summer reading program. Three hundred forty-four children registered for the program. We received thirteen survey responses. And so those responses are all attached. There's some information at the top, and then underneath, the open responses from the parents who took out the surveys. Can we read through? And if there are any other questions for the Director, I can take them down.
Just, I have, I noticed that that job description for the Library Director is on the website.
Thank you.
People might have missed seeing that. Molly, the other thing on the bill schedule, on eight, three, actually, fourth, I think both sides. And it was the, Gary, yes, he, who is that?
He is the presenter who is doing the employment workshops. They're Zoom program. We're right in the middle of those now. So we're doing a weekly Zoom program.
Where are those?
On our website, on the town social media, the Constant Contact email, the usual places that the programs are produced.
And then the Home Depot stuff, is that all to do with the Merriam Room?
The ceiling tiles, yeah.
How many times have you seen those?
Several.
I mean, three, probably twelve to fifteen times.
Do I listen?
I don't know if anybody else wants to talk about the evaluations, but these are the first evaluations that I've ever seen in the last seven years that, you know, really it's a positive attempt.
I agree.
To evaluate.
I agree.
And it's just, I'm sorry, but there's not much you can do about it, at least not initially, I guess. But eventually, maybe there'll be a way to get more people to respond. When you get fifteen out of three thirty-seven, it's a little discouraging.
Yeah.
And the same with the other. But, you know, I think it's really good. I think the answers to questions. Well, I think it was really kind of interesting, even with the small group. There was only four that answered. I still think that it was well worth. I know it's a lot of work producing something like this, but I really think that eventually, people might be able to respond. More people might be able to respond. There might be ways to figure out how to respond. But I thought that this was really, really helpful. No assessment is perfect, that's for sure. But I think it provides, provides what I was looking for, not for myself, but for, not for the Board of Trustees, but for staff. It provides some information that can really be helpful. And where you had thirteen people respond, I thought this was really kind of interesting. And I thought, so were the questions.
Yeah, they're.
Everything was good.
Then the last little one is the, they had fifteen. Some of the comments were worthwhile as well. And I know doing comments on any kind of a survey is a problem. It's really complicated. But I think there's a richness in that that's really worth doing.
Yeah, great.
So I'm.
Positive move forward, right?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I agree.
What format were the surveys sent in?
It was on Survey Monkey.
Okay.
Sent out through the Constant Contact email.
It's a lot more information than you get on a quick QR code.
Yeah.
Well, it also takes some time for people to get used to seeing that coming back for a while. It's a good starting point.
I agree.
I haven't had a chance to take a look at the material.
Okay.
It's more of a good evaluation.
Right, yeah. I listed.
Okay, I have a question. What were the six grants that you guys submitted to the Auburn Cultural Council for? What's the words?
Yeah, I will have to refer that to Jean.
Okay, okay. And can we get a little bit more information about the Auburn Youth and Families and ESL Specialist Collaborative? Can you tell us a little more about that?
I, I will. Get Jean with that.
Okay. Any specific que, I'm so sorry, I mean, any specific question that you want to provide, Molly, so that she can get that specific information?
Oh, no, I was just looking for an update. Information on both of those things, like either, either subject, what are they working to do? You know, because of course, we're interested in the area thing.
Anybody else have any questions?
Yeah, I have one. Molly, you had mentioned the CW Mars migrating to a new organizational system or classification system.
It's, it's a cataloged, the public-facing catalog where you can search for books in the catalog, basically.
Okay.
So the stamp side is still the same, it's just the public side will, you know.
Will change a little bit. And is there any kind of transition that we need to do with the public, you know, get instructions or something?
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Because I use that all the time.
Any other questions from the board?
Lindsay, you talked about Monday about ESL programs. And just wondering, do you have any thoughts about that yourself?
No, I'm excited to see that there's partnership with Youth and Family Services, because that was exactly the type of program that I was connected to. It was offered at the library, but it was through a partner nonprofit that had, it's sort of like touch training for volunteers to deliver some of the classes. And, you know, provided some materials and things that you could bring to the classes. But, but yeah, I'll just be eager to hear what Youth and Family Services says, the need.
And you might be a resource that people might be able to use as well.
Yeah, absolutely. I'm happy to partner once we have a little more information, if there's anything I can offer.
Anything else?
I was a speechwriter.
I do.
Yeah, okay. And by the way, I speak Portuguese and French.
Nice.
And I'm still pretty good at Asian Korean.
Nice.
If you ever need to absorb it, then give me a call.
I speak German, but I don't think there's a very real.
Do some, some reading in all those languages. Read some books to kids in all those languages.
That's a great idea. Anything else regarding the report? Okay. Did you want to share anything about, anything else?
That's all that I have.
Okay. Very good, all right. So we will move on to the update from the APL BOT Subcommittee regarding the governance of the Charter. Matt or Vera?
Well, you want to go ahead?
It's your party.
Well, we were able to take a look at some of the materials we used when we went before the order selection in September of twenty-one. And to use that as a basis for what it is we might be able to do, instead of making a charter change or requesting a charter change. Everybody is very nervous about any kind of charter change. But what I think we're talking about, we actually said something at the old meeting one day, the three of us could go, could schedule a meeting with Ed and at least talk about the three things that we think are important so that we aren't as unable to provide any kind of governance. What we've had to do typically is to go through the Town Manager, make a request, and then something could get done. But without doing that, a direct request, we were not very successful. And we'd like to be able to be more successful by being involved in the hiring and in the role setting and in the evaluation. I think, is that a lot right there?
I guess it is a both, right? I mean, we just went over the allegot to where we got and where we want to go. So I think the next step will be maybe seeking a meeting.
Well, we could do that. And the other thing is, I think we need to confirm, what we would also give at that meeting is the goals that we agreed to September sixth.
Yeah.
Copy of that. I should just pass these out again. So.
Thank you.
Have that in confirmation from the board. There was one place in there that we had made one change in number three. We had young adults.
You talked about these in that meeting. Do you feel any need to read them aloud for the, for the broadcast?
Yeah, I, that's up to you.
Okay. What is the board thing?
I mean. If it was not posted with the, with the agenda, you should read it into.
Okay, very good. You mean, we should, we should, sorry, I missed the second part of what you said.
You should leave it into the record if it was not posted.
Very good. And we can attach it, yeah, and post it. Very good, good decision. Great. Anything else about, anything else related to the governance of the Charter meetings? You too? Well, did you want me to read it?
Yes.
Oh, so sorry, I totally misunderstood. Sorry, I thought you were saying to attach.
You don't have to read it verbatim.
No. So you know what I will, just because it's pretty succinct. These are the goals for the APL Library Director voted by the APL BOT meeting on September sixth, two thousand twenty-three, to send to the Town Manager for consideration. Again, we're an advisory. Hire a librarian, MLS and Commonwealth certified as the Assistant Director of the APL by February first, two thousand twenty-four, and a children's librarian, excuse me, MSL and Commonwealth certified by May first, two thousand and twenty-four. Work with whatever resources available to return to a full staff by, at the APL by May first. Offer technology classes and other, other young adult and adult programs, at least thirty, with measurable outcomes, aside from craft offerings, by May first, two thousand twenty-four. The monthly BOT meetings Director's Report should include a completed database assessment of at least one program each week, identifying the goals of the program and the assessment of the measurable outcomes. Provide monthly, twelve months, database assessment of the measurable outcomes from at least one of the APL strategic plan goals. Provide monthly, twelve updates on the work being done on at least one of the APL strategic plan goals.
And I would just add to that, the reason we specify monthly twelve is that, of course, we don't need every single month. We pause for the holidays and pause for the summer. But we should still receive reports on what goes on during those months, because the library does continue to run.
It does. It does. Thank you for the clarification. I missed the beat on that one. I don't mind being redirected every once in a while. Anything else that you, that you want to add? No? And didn't you have, you have a meeting, you have a meeting tonight?
Yes.
Subcommittee tonight. Are there any future Subcommittee meetings?
I don't, well, after we meet with Ed, I would guess why they have a meeting. Or, or not, we just treat work back with the board in December.
Okay, well, we're not meeting in December. You mean February seventh.
At the first meeting after the holidays.
At the first meeting after the holidays. Sorry, we'd say we're laughing because, Lindsay, we used to meet, we used to meet December and January, and we decided about a season and a half ago that we would take two breaks, that particular time in the winter and then in the summer. Anything else anybody wants to add? All right. What we've been, I need a drumroll, I'm just kidding. Steve is going to lead a discussion. I know that he's, you've spent a lot of time in the community when you were running. You had talked about how you got input from people about things that they would like to see, and you've been generous enough to prepare to talk about ways that we can engage the community. So just, you have the floor, Steve.
Well, I've got a handout for everybody here, because I like writing.
I like handouts.
And, oh, I'm going to use those. So.
Awesome, thank you.
Let me start with, with kind of background on why I'm interested in this issue of public engagement. It's been sort of a lifelong thread for me, having worked in the international development sector, and specifically with community development in many countries in Africa. And having worked very intimately with communities, you know, it, it sort of gave me the, the real appreciation for the community and how important it is to be a part of that community and also understand it. And what we're talking about with the engagement between the Board and the community is that really understanding of what the community's wants and needs are, and being able to express them to the library, express them to the town, and, and see that, see that the, the issue is that can be acted upon, are acted upon. So I kind of organized this by, you know, in terms of, first of all, kind of recognizing our mandate, the Board's mandate for public engagement. And I said this in the meeting on Monday, one of our, I think one of our prime responsibilities is to be the nexus between the community and the library, promoting library to the community, and channeling community's views back to the library. And then I put the, you know, I, I say here that the resource we have for doing this, we only have one resource, and that's us. That's our own time, our own interest in really going out and getting public feedback and interacting with the public and telling them about the library. So what I'm going to talk about is another thing, starting with, you talked about surveys. You talked about surveys early, so in my tenure, past year. And we talked about designing a survey that would be available to library users at the library. I think there's, I think there's a real, there are real issues with that. It's not, it's not that that is a bad way to survey, but it, it's got baked into it kind of a selection bias, that only people who come to the library fill it out, only people who are interested in filling it out, fill it out. So it's really self-selected. And the information we get from that is information from a very, very small sliver of the community. And so one of the ideas that, that I've used over and over again in the communities that I've worked in is mixed method survey, which is, it's sort of, it's sort of all of the above. It's all the different kinds of ways that you can, you can gather quantitative data on how people are feeling. So, yes, the paper survey at the library desk, absolutely, that's essential. But there's also surveys, we can do the Survey Monkey, which you talked about. There's surveys that we can, we can do on Facebook groups, things like that. There's going out and taking even the paper surveys and going out to different organizations in the town. And, you know, just sitting in front of the door when they have a meeting. If you want to take a survey, you know, and that kind of thing. And so, and one of the problems with, with surveys is that, is that you can, they can be hard to fill out. You know? And if they're not designed correctly, they create actually a barrier to participation, because people say, I'm ashamed, I'm tired for this. You know, and so you have to have a kind of a stimulating presentation, approach for the survey, you know, that type of thing. And that's where my second point here is get professional help designing survey questions. We just did this in the Auburn Cultural Council. We did an online survey of people's priorities for, for who the council, or what the council should, should fund in Auburn in terms of cultural events, music and all this kind of stuff. And we had put together a set of questions that, you know, the people on the council thought, hmm, those are interesting. And one of the, one of the members said, you know, if you ask this question upfront, people are going to stop there and say, I don't want to fill out this survey. You know? And she, she said, let me take this to, you know, she, she works in marketing, this kind of thing. So she took it to one of her people. And they reordered the questions, changed, changed around the way the questions are asked, and made all the difference in the book. And they very quantitatively accurate when we got the information. And we, we got a better return on the, on the, you know, survey responses than we would have if we didn't. And it seems like we're having a problem in survey responses on the evaluation and stuff like that. So that could, that could help in terms of getting better results. The third one here is get the word out about the survey. And this is where, this is where our resource as, as Board members comes in. How can we? How can we, as board members, with the, you know, I understand the time constraints and all of that, how can we use public events, get into the local press, get on local radio, Auburn TV, this type of thing, to inform the public that there's a survey? You know? Because right now, the only way that people would know there's a survey is if they come into the library and see it on the desk in the library. So we could, we could sort of fan out in the community and find out what are the best ways. We could even put up a notice on bulletin boards. I got a, in the real Auburn site, there was some guy who did a map of all the bulletin boards, the public bulletin boards in Auburn. And, you know, so we could put up some kind of advertisement on the bulletin boards. And these are all kind of low-tech, you know? Everybody goes now, you know, goes now, first of all, for all the high-tech social media kind of stuff. You know, want to stay low-tech or at least have a combination too, because not everybody can access the social media high-tech. So getting the word out about the survey, to get those numbers of responses up if we can. And that may be one metric of whether we're doing a good job of getting feedback from the community, seeing how many responses we get, you know? And that's, that's a performance metric for us. So as I, as I just said about, you know, the non-digital, there's also the digital engagement that I think is important. And here, you know, I confess that, you know, I'm a user of social media and this kind of thing. I'm not a, I'm not a super user or anything like that. And if there is someone among us who can serve as kind of a digital engagement officer, Lindsay-
You could be right.
Awesome.
That's right. But, you know, and would be follow-up on posting information, not only about surveys, but about, you know, other, other things that the board is doing, you know, put on their, you know, posting, "Oh, we had a meeting and we talked about this and that," you know? And kind of get the, get the listing of social media groups, Facebook groups or, you know, I don't know if there's listservs or, I hesitate to say X or Twitter because that's not a good reputation, you know? You know, something like that. And have postings on there. This is, this is something I was thinking about because I've done a lot with my own organization about our projects overseas, is could we as board members write just short, one paragraph, personal experience postings on our interactions with the library, why we are board, why we are interested in being board members? Put that out there.
Would you think, yeah?
You know, and, you know, give people, you know, first of all, humanize this. People don't even know us, but, you know, once they do, hopefully they see us as human beings, you know? That type of thing. And, you know, also something about why the, why we feel the library is important to the community, you know? So all of this can be put up on digital media. And there's actually, for this, there's a, there's an article that I'm going to send out to all of you. It's an article I found on community engagement writ large, but specifically about different ways we can take advantage of digital media for, for surveys, put surveys on there and that type of thing. It's actually a very comprehensive article about digital media and community engagement. So I'll send that out to you. Point number four, knowing the community. This is one of my favorites here, okay? Because every community is different. This is something I tell my colleagues at work when we're working with, there's a tendency even in my business to say, "Ah, all African communities are the same," or "All communities in this particular district are the same." They're not. Each one is its own individual self. Each one has its own groups, its own quirks, its own, you know, interesting facts about it, interesting people. It has its own influencers. And do we, as a board, who is supposed to be, you know, presenting the library to the community, do we know at that depth of knowledge, the, you know, the character of the community we're in? A lot of us do because a lot of us have been here forever, you know? But the problem with being there forever is like you're fish in water. You don't realize you're swimming in water because water is surrounding you all the time. And so it would be interesting to do some exercises, you know, talking about what are the different groups in town?
Absolutely.
What is the, the, who are the influencers? Who are the active people? Who are the groups that might be, we use this a lot in my business, marginalized groups, you know? People that don't get out, people who don't get to the library. Is there any way we can bring them into the library? You know, and an important group for us is also people who, for some reason, don't like the library. When I was, when I was out there giving signatures for my election, I had a lady come up to me, and she said, "You know, the best thing you can do for that library is tear it down, build a new one," you know? She didn't like the way it looked or something.
Yeah. You can appreciate that.
Well- But it would be interesting to engage these people because, you know, it's easy to say "tear it down," but why?
Why?
And what should come up in its place? What should it look like? You know, because those are the people who maybe have thought about it a little bit, you know? So, you know, getting to know the community, and we have also another technique that I've used, it's called a segmentation study, which is to figure out who are the different audiences for, in my, in my case, in, you know, communities that I work in, for the health system, you know? Who uses the health system? And what are the different groups of people who use the health system? Here, what are the different groups of people who use the library? And how do they use it? And what kind of messages are they most willing to hear from the library? And what kind of feedback do they have for, you know, the library? Their desires for the library, you know, that kind of thing? And have those kind of, you know, deep discussions, getting to know our community better. So-
Awesome.
Then going on here, something I call boots on the ground. And this is, this is really the, you know, the surveys and the, you know, the digital media and all of that is largely getting quantitative information about what the community feels about the library. But we often ignore the large sort of, I would call it dark matter of the community in terms of what is the qualitative information that is the context for that quantitative information? You know? We can, we can have, we can have a quantitative result from a survey that says that 74% of people would like to see more adolescent programs, okay? But until we get that qualitative of why and what kind and, you know, what has been the experience before about the library, until, until that qualitative information comes in, we only have a number, you know? And so if we can, if we can spend some time doing qualitative work in the community, that gives us a better context and context to understand those numbers. So the first idea, which I've mentioned here before, is this idea of have a donut with a board member. And I've seen this work with political figures, you know, the-
You love that idea.
And it's just, you know, buy a box of donuts and a cup of coffee, sit in the corner in a, you know, one of the cafes here, one of the diners, or Dunkin' Donuts or something like this, with a sign up saying, "Come talk to me about the library," you know? And that, you know, is an open door to some very interesting conversations, you know?
I agree. We also have the digital sign outside, which, you know, with the cooperation of library staff, we could, we could post that, you know, as a digital means of people to be aware of that.
Exactly. So it's, you know, a board member will be available between this hour and this hour.
I love that.
And I'd be willing to be the guinea pig on that.
That'd be great.
Happy to do that. And it should be a two-way conversation, okay? That, you know, people come, they give feedback to us, but us as board members should also be able to speak back to these individuals about, you know, our experience at the library, the library's importance in the community, and, you know, find out from them, you know, "Why aren't you using the library more?" Or, you know, "What would you like to see?" you know, and this type of thing. But also, you know, just give basic information on the library, answer any questions people might have. People might say, "How do I get a library card? I have no idea how to get a library card." And so you could, you know, that's a perfect opportunity to tell them, you know? I, just a little anecdote, I brought my daughter in the library today. And she just arrived from Miami on Monday. She's been living here for the last five years. Said, "I'm tired of the sun and the sand. I want to come up to cold, hard Massachusetts."
There you go.
Sure point, though.
And she wants to reestablish herself and find a job in Worcester and, you know, that kind of thing.
Awesome.
So I had to come by the library anyway to pick up her book, and I brought her in, introduced her to Molly and Dave. And, and she, because I was telling her, she doesn't have a computer. I was telling her, "You can come use the computers at the library." And then she started asking me all these questions. "How do you use a computer at the library?" And, you know, "Do I have to pay?" you know, this kind of thing. And, you know, I was able to answer because I know how that works. But there are people out there who, you know, even these people reestablishing, you know, or coming to Auburn for the first time, you know? Basically, we want to lower all those barriers to people coming and using the library. And that's something we can do, you know, in these events. The other one that I think is interesting is this looking at local organizations that are already here, okay? I understand we have the Rotary Club, we have Alliance Club, we have other service organizations, and they often are looking for speakers for their lunchtime meetings. I've spoken at Rotary Club meetings before. I'm not a Rotary member, but they've called me in because, you know, I talk about what I do, you know, they're interested in that. That's something that we could do with, oh, Chamber of Commerce as well, that's another one. You know, we could talk to members of that and say, "Look, I'd like to come in and talk to your group about the, about the library. I don't know how many of you like public speaking." I love public speaking. I'm a former Toastmaster.
Right.
Yeah, I'm a former Toastmaster, and I just, you know, it's a challenge for me. I love it. I love those opportunities, and this is, this is something I think we can, we can do. There are the senior center. We should, we should be going and talking with the people at the senior center. We should be talking with, you know, there's church groups here, book clubs, you know? Last, on Monday, Anne said that she, she was a member of a book club here. You know, I'm a member of a book club, but not here. We do it, you know, kind of remotely. But I'm sure there are book clubs here. I know the library sponsors one book club, but I know there are other ones here. And, you know, jump in and tell them about the library, you know, that type of thing.
Yep.
So all of these opportunities are existing for us to go out there and really boost the library, pump up the library, you know? And I think that would be, that would be great. So those are, those are the main ideas that I had, but I had a couple of other issues here. One is, what do we do with the feedback? You know, once we get the feedback, either quantitative or qualitative, how do we, how do we coalesce it? How do we gather it up? And who do we, you know, who do we share this with? Of course, we share with the library, but it's important also to share with the town. And it could, you know, this is where we may connect this up with the strategic goals that we were talking about. Because if we get from the community, if we hear sort of a common thread in the community about a particular thing that's not at the library that they would like to see, that might be the opportunity for us to put it in as a, as a recommended strategic goal, you know, for the library. So there's a connection there.
Absolutely.
And then the last one here is conclusion. The community engagement that we've been talking about, that's only a first step, okay? If we get feedback and, you know, we say, "Oh, that's interesting. That's interesting feedback," and that kind of thing, and that's all that comes of it, then first of all, it's going to be harder for us to get feedback because the community will be looking for improvements. If they're being asked for their opinion, they're going to want to see their opinion reflected in developments in the library.
Absolutely.
So we, it's incumbent on us to make sure that, that if we bring in feedback, it's stuff that can be actionable and stuff that we can, we can be accountable to the community for, and go back to them and say, "Look, you told us you wanted this. There it is."
There it is.
You know, that type of thing. And, and the more we do that, the iterations of doing that will build kind of a cycle of trust, you know, between the board as, as that promoter and nexus for the community and the community itself and the library. And that's what we want is, you know, just to-
Absolutely.
Make things better and better, excelsior, you know?
Right.
And that's it. That's all I have.
Well, that's awesome. The lot that you had is awesome. I just, you just prompted me to remind everyone that two weeks ago, on October 17th, Mike Marino was kind enough to put together a group email for us. So I just want to say it since we're broadcasting, that the, that we would all, it comes to this email, but we all get a copy of feedback from the town. So we would love to hear feedback from our patrons. The email address is one word, libraryfeedback, one word, at town.auburn.m-a.us. Again, libraryfeedback, one word, at town.auburn.m-a.us. I'm not trying, did we look at the website to see if that's up on our website yet? Is that, Molly?
Not that I-
That's right. Wasn't being rude. I was trying to pull up the library thing while we were-
Again, please, library feedback.
Yes, it's libraryfeedback. That's one word. The symbol for @town.auburn.m-a.us. And Mike has invited all of us to provide our email address, and again, patrons would be able to, you know, give feedback into this, and we would all get a copy. And as Vera mentioned a couple of meetings ago, we wouldn't necessarily, we won't use anyone's names, but it would be a really nice way to generate feedback.
Want to close the loop.
Right.
To see that we received it and we're talking about it.
Absolutely. And so let's open up the floor for discussion. I just love-
Wait, wait, very important thing.
Yes.
Not just library patrons, members of the community.
Thank you.
Any members of the Auburn community who are either patrons presently, used to be patrons, or want to just tell us why they don't want to come.
Right.
All of it is super, super useful, and even negative feedback is truly a wealth of information. Like, it's not bad to hear what you're doing wrong. And strategic criticism is an opportunity to see where things can be made better to drive community engagement. So all feedback is encouraged and welcome.
Thank you for that clarification. I didn't intend to create a narrative. I didn't intend to create a narrow scope, but thank you for that. And it's very important to note that over the past few months, I've gotten feedback through letters, but also from people in the community talking about things that come up in our discussions that are interesting to them. And there has been this lack of, you know, having a reciprocal relationship with the community. You said, you were singing my song, as a teacher and a school administrator and a coach, I always say, the students, I might not be their influencer, but I sure as heck am going to find out who is. And that's how I get them to invest in everything. So, I get to know their pastor or their coach, their parents are key. You know, if you don't get the parents, you don't get the students. So, I totally agree with everything that you talked about. I'm interested in just feedback from the, or discussion from the team in terms of these ideas that Steve was generous enough to bring forth.
Well, I'm pretty impressed. It's really nice job, Steve, thank you. There's another part of me that says, this is a great background in preparation for the next strategic plan, which will probably have to be started after next summer. Because it's Auburn 25. And this would be so much better for the strategic plan than anything that we did in the past effort for a strategic plan. We didn't have anything like this going on. But there's no group you've missed, you know, in terms of trying to help us focus on just a variety of things that we can do. And it is true, and it gives us something meaningful to do. And, you know, we can't fundraise for the library, but we can talk about the library, and we can go out and do so many of the things that you've said. And that brings people in who might want to talk about it. And we could sometime ask the friends, if they may have some people that would like to follow up after we've talked, and talk about some fundraising. Because they can do that.
Yes, they can.
Where we can't.
That coordination.
Yeah. So, I, you know, it's sort of hard to figure out exactly where to start with this, but, I mean, there's so many different places, and you can sort of start anywhere here and begin the process. Because we really, we tried very hard with focus groups, but COVID did us in.
That's true.
And it was very, very difficult, even trying to do, that was early Zoom, people didn't know how to do that. And certainly, adults weren't prepared for that, most adults. So, this sounds like a really, it's now it's a question of where do we start? How do things get assigned to people, or how they might want to take certain parts of this to do it?
You know, I keep thinking about, we tried to do some surveys with town meeting members.
And that should give us a pretty good array of people who are interested in the community. It doesn't give us a lot of other, not everybody, that's for sure. But it gives us a start, and we might be able to find some places to go from people that we talked to that are town meeting members.
I was going to say, one of the big strengths here is it's really easy to fall back on survey, survey, survey. Survey fatigue is real, I'm married to a survey researcher. You know, and a quantitative sociologist, so I'm sitting here going, yep, yeah, oh, I know all these words. And that is one piece that's really important, but I think the visibility piece is the other really big, important part, where, you know, when people vote, or write in names, or whatever it is, they may not know who that person is and may not be able to put a face to a name and see them connected to the library in any capacity. So, this helps us get a sense of, in addition to the surveys, in addition to that more formal way of connecting with community members, particularly those who are like the accidental happenstance, stumbled across this type of thing. People who are running around and would love to be involved in town meeting, but don't have the time or the resources, or whatever, who really would love to know more about what's going on here and the ways to get connected, because they may not be connected to the community. I'm a transplant, I moved to Auburn in 2013. I had kids, it's the only reason why I was able to get connected to the community in ways I did. You know, a lot of people who move here may not have that ready made, here's how you get connected to a community when you're from a thousand miles away, or farther. And so, having some visibility, I like the idea of either talking with other organizations, whether they're formal, community-based organizations, or, you know, the farmer's market idea is, I think, really interesting as well. Just becoming more visible as, not fundraisers obviously, but like boosters, or not even representatives of the library, but just connected to the library and in the interest of the library, where we can communicate some of the things that the library wants us to, where we can sort of be that back and forth. And they can, you know, if we're in the grocery store, someone will be there on the library committee. Because right now, that doesn't happen. I don't think, well, maybe for some of us, not for me.
It's pretty rare.
Right, I mean, and whether we want that or not, in the grocery store, but you never know, right? You never know what'll come out of some of those, some of those interactions. And I think that's useful in a holistic way, to get a lot of different things about, you know, I know we've mentioned before, high schoolers, I have a freshman in high school where, when it's not musical season, he comes over here to do homework, because the bus otherwise goes home at 2:00. You know, this is a good place for that kind of thing, and for, you know, in the absence of other places to go. You know, what do those students think? They may not be completely forthcoming, because high schoolers rarely are, but you never know periodically, every so often you stumble on them in the wild, they may tell you.
You know, it could be interesting, if we could think about, I forgot, we were meeting December, but if we could think about some basic questions. I mean, even, you could come to this library and sit down with somebody, or coming out of voting and just say, you know, but you can't have piles of questions, you have a few questions. We ought to decide what might be those two or three questions that we would just be able to ask someone if they're interested, you know, what are the other three or four that we might want?
Or even one that, and that one for like a month, and then it rotates, and you have different one for a month. And it's one question, because I know, I'm the one who's like, "Don't make eye contact." "Don't let them know that I'm a sentient being," because I don't have the time to fill out whatever it is, but one question.
Two, do you come to the library? Why? Because if the answer is no, we want to know why. If the answer is yes, we want to know why. There's no bad there.
Another thing I've seen work, just the discussion here, I just thought of it. In New Mexico, I was part of the voter registration effort there. And we lived in a county that had very, very low registration. And the people on the committee, myself included, got ourselves big badges that said, "Ask me about voter registration." And we walked around with those, you know, in all the supermarkets and that kind of thing. You have the most random people come up to you and just ask, "How do I register?" you know, so.
You said three things that popped for me, and part of it was the interviews the other night. Some of the feedback was very important, I had to be thinking. One was, I think it's a great idea to have sort of an introduction to who the board members are with just a picture and a quick, "Why do you want to serve in the board? What's interesting about you?" I think that would be awesome. I was thinking about when Ms. El-Sayed said to go out to where the teenagers are, and then we talked about the Auburn youth and families, and I was thinking how neat it would be if in partnership with the friends, we went out and found out where we could offer books, where we can bring books. We used to go to shelters when, you know, in my earlier days, and just donate things like books and baskets and things like that. I think it would be, literacy is awesome. And just, when I think of, I always think of, when I think of my mom and dad, I think of like how important it was, the stories, and how important it was that I had Newsweek in time, my whole life, even before I was reading, they were always, I saw the front page of everything that was going on, so I can speak to it, and I can talk to it vividly with my students. And we often talk about the richness of culture and history and cycles and things like that. That's literacy, isn't it? And it's exciting, and it lights everybody up. And I just, I think the other piece that you talked about, Steve, that's important to me, is public speaking. Whether it's to go out to, again, Auburn Family Services, talk about, you know, "These are some great things that are going on in the library, we'd love to have your families come." Finding out why teens, you know, what kind of, what kind of interaction we have with our teens. And being able to kind of say, "Oh, what would attract you to the library? What do we need?" But, and also those types of functions where we could go out and just cheerlead for the things that are going on in the library right now. I just think that's, those are awesome suggestions.
It wouldn't be a bad idea, actually, because of how time between this meeting and the next meeting is, if there isn't some committee that would want to talk about the public engagement, talk about what they'd like to see from the rest of us.
I'd be willing to volunteer for that subcommittee. I'm very interested, and I just, I really appreciate the way that you broke this into chunks, that we could really, especially the mixed methods surveying, and just some of the ideas that you came up with, I'd be very interested. And in the town where I'm working right now, I'm also reaching out, how to get our families more engaged, so I'm part of that committee, because it is about knowing who everybody is, and knowing context is really important. Why? You know, why, what would make you engage? How could we engage you better? Maybe you don't have to come in, maybe we can come out.
Well, even, you know, you mentioned Twitter, I used to call it X, but Twitter. And, you know, what, where's, I think of it always as students, but, you know, were my students engaged when I first started at Worcester State? It was Twitter, now it's Instagram and Snapchat and other stuff. And figuring out those different cycles of where students are, and what they're doing, and where teens are, like, I can't keep up, and I, too many, too many social media platforms. But different ways and different connections where, you know, if it's Reddit, if it's Pinterest, weirdly Pinterest is making a comeback among high schoolers, it's very strange. But, you know, these sorts of things, and just what that means for their digital ecosystem and how they consume information. Thinking about high schoolers here, but also, you know, younger students, my daughter's in third grade. She's well aware of all the things she's not allowed to be on. But she's aware of them, right? And so, and dreams of the day, she can go on all these things. But also, you know, YouTube and TikTok and all that stuff. You know, what does that mean then, how we communicate with them? Even if it's not, let's go just put something out on that platform, how does, how do we engage them then? And what does that mean for how we understand what they want and need out of the library?
Lindsay, it was you that mentioned libraries have the Instagram, right?
Well, I think like there's, you know, the town has Instagram, and I know you were just mentioning postings are going up on that, and so, yeah, I think STEM do have that. I was actually reading about this, because I was really thinking about it after that interview. And I actually went out and I read like a Reddit, something I read, about like library engagement for communities and young kids. And it was really actually interesting, because I think there's also a risk of trying to like be too cool and try to mimic something or do something on this platform, and then it completely flops and fails. So, I think there's a good balance, but everything I read was like, actually just that kids are craving like some in-person, right, some in-person time, in-person FaceTime. And so, having those interactions, and I don't know what connection we have with the high school, it's just like right there, you can see it, you know? So, having something there, and I need to familiarize myself more with like the collection and the types of things that we offer, but, you know, I remember there were just really unique offerings in some of the, like in Summer Valley, they had a library of things in addition to the books and media collections.
Well, I agree with you on that.
Yeah, and I feel like that is a really interesting way, that an opportunity, especially for kids coming from diverse backgrounds, like you can bring everybody together over a board game or, I don't know, Dungeons and Dragons, you know, like something for after school that is like fun. And like, it's a common, a common space where you can find that, because, yeah, it can be hard to pull kids in, but.
Every kid has a thing.
Every kid has a thing, and so, finding the right things.
I agree, three that are really popular with the kids I work with, grades five to eight, Pokemon clubs, that would be a neat thing, Legos clubs, and you mentioned Dungeons and Dragons. Our library is packed every Wednesday with a Dungeons and Dragons club. I actually got my homework, homework group kicked out, because I, because they needed the space, so we use the STEM room, but it was a great idea. And I think it would draw students in if, and I want to point out, I know that you mentioned that you are new to the community, there's the high school is right there, but then just up Swanson, there's two, there's an elementary and an intermediate school. So, yeah, we're right here in the center of the community.
Mary, maybe you can expand your subcommittee.
Yeah, I would like to, I'd like to, another thing
I can offer, but I don't know who might be willing.
What I'd like to offer directly, you referenced, there's two Auburn websites, the Real Auburn and the other one, I can't remember if it references the old mascot. They both have a Monday morning business page. So, it would be a great thing to have a picture and a blurb every Monday, and we could do that over a period, even though we're in, we're out, you know, we're not in session, I would be willing to volunteer for that piece. To just literally just post it, and then they approve it and they post it, sorry.
And, and, no, I'm sorry, that was my bad. And to make a post about this new library feedback email. Because I do what I do, because I'm old school, so I go on Facebook, and I go to the Auburn groups, and I search the word "library" to see what people are saying. And that's where they'll say like, "I heard this other community's library does X, I wish we could do X." Or, "Our library doesn't offer Y," or, "I thought our library offered this," and someone's like, "Are you sure?" And it's a really, it's a good kind of passive, I'm never there for the real conversation, unfortunately, my timing is off. But, you know, like library of things comes up, it keeps bubbling up where, you know, what things? Does Worcester do things, does somebody else do things? But it's just really helpful, so I think to put out there, "Hey, you could actually talk to people that are affiliated with the library, give us the information about what you want." That would be awesome, and most appropriate for advertising Mondays.
Yes, I agree. And what about the donut, or the getting donut? Do you have any idea in terms of your vision about when we could start that? And whether you'd recruit us for whichever Saturday or Sunday of the month?
I think the only thing we would have to do is, you know, pick the venue and talk to the owner of the venue, make sure it's okay with them. And, you know, just make a pool of sun and buy a box of donuts, that's it.
That's great.
And honestly, that might be something to do also in the summer when we're not meeting.
Oh, yeah.
I agree with you.
That's what I was thinking.
Because then in our first meeting, right, of the year, you can report back what we each individually did. And that's where the farmers markets, or those concerts and parties, or sports events, or, you know, whatever it is. That could be a place where then, in our off-season.
That's why those, developing those couple of questions, maybe through that subcommittee, and give that to the rest of us would be helpful.
And I did hear your question, but I was thinking in terms of, in terms of the profiles, I'm thinking, the profile, maybe one sentence about something that we want to know, hear from, and include the library hours and our feedback link. Does that make sense?
It does.
Okay, and I'm going back to your question, I heard you Matt, I would like to start an engagement committee. Anybody interested, and anybody suggest any, any time that we could execute this, or, and I'm open to all.
Oh, me, me, big me.
Okay, awesome. So, we have Steve, anybody else? All right, Lindsay, great. Anybody else? Okay, me.
Can't have any more than that.
Okay, yeah, you're right, three, yeah.
I was just going to say, I do not volunteer for committee, but I'm totally down for donuts.
Well, stop by, stop by.
Yeah, and in terms of when are we thinking that we start the subcommittee, start the meeting? Do we wait until February? Do we want to meet in December? We have January, any, I'm open.
Well, I think my question about it, and I think you sort of alluded to this, is essentially, what do we do with this? So, this is a lot of potential work to gather all this, and potentially a lot of information to sort through and decide what to do, and insert it under the banner of, we're getting ready for supporting strategic planning and kind of, you know, reorganization, like is that the framing of it? And that maybe then guides the body of questions, but also the timing, when they start digging in? Because you also don't want a huge lag between collecting some feedback, it's two and a half years later, and we still haven't done anything tangible, so.
But, you know, some of this stuff, since it's, you know, new activities, we got to pilot and see if it really works, you know, proof of concept. And so, you know, I would volunteer to, you know, do the donut to board member maybe sometime, even in November.
Yeah, I would too. Can I join you for that?
Sure.
You tell me the date? That would be awesome. I totally agree. And again, we can, we can communicate between meetings, we just can't reply all, anything that would be we'd need to deliberate on, so I want to just clarify that. We can communicate with each other, but if it's something that was going to come up and it had a potential vote, that would be considered a violation of the open meeting law, right, Vera?
Yeah, absolutely, but we can, for example, send an email. Yeah, absolutely, but we can, for example, send an email like, I'm going to be at XYZ Coffee Shop on Friday. Anybody want to join me?
Yeah, absolutely.
Because, I mean, I'm down for coffee any day of the week. The company is nice too. So we can coordinate, you know, that kind of thing. But that's not, we've already done the deliberating here.
And then also going out and making contacts with the, with the different groups, like the Rotary Lions and that kind of thing.
Okay.
I don't know if people have connections, you know, already.
I think the Rotary's pretty much finished. I think the last thing they tried to do was a telescoping project with the library. And I, that didn't go very far, if I recall. Remember when they got the big telescope and they were going to do all kinds of programming with it? Didn't go, I don't think they had the membership, but I know the chamber is still.
Yeah.
And the Alex, they're very active. So there are, there are groups like that.
Yeah, how about like the DFW as well?
Right.
That's right, that includes Auburn, that'd be interesting.
Yeah, I think that would be part of the mission of the, of the subcommittee, getting out there, right?
Sure, getting out and asking, do you actually invite speakers?
Right, that's a great idea. I'm willing to jump on that, absolutely, absolutely. Any other, any other commentary questions?
No, not yet, but one other thing I'd like to bring up, it's not on the agenda, but it's, and we're not voting on it.
Okay.
But the naming committee for the addition to the library, as well as other things in town, is going to be meeting, I think, soon. And if you have any, we don't have, the suggestions that we have now are basically to name it the trustees room or to name it the Pappus room. And so, if you have any other ideas or any strong feelings about any of that, just email me. We don't, I won't respond to it at all, but just email me if you have any thoughts about the naming for that new addition. That's all.
Okay, so, but thank you, Steve, that was awesome. And I got me energized, very energized. So I just want to remind everyone, the next meeting for the full APL BOT is Wednesday, February 7th, 2024, here in the Marion Room at Auburn Public Library. And I just want to find out if we have a vote to adjourn. That would be Erica, and do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, sir. And the ending time of our meeting is 7:43 for the purpose of minutes. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alice.